Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Member of 20th Supervisor Meeting. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a prayer if you would.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that are gathered here this evening. I thank you for our township. I thank you for our leaders in our country. Give them all strength and wisdom to continue to lead us to prosperity. Heavenly Father, we look over, ask everybody to have safe travels over this Thanksgiving holiday, and we give thanks to you in all things. Watch over some of the families who are within the township here. Heal their families in their time of sickness and need. And you're heading in with prayer. Amen. Thank you.
There's no executive sessions to announce, and this evening's meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast reasons. First item on the agenda is public comment. Five minutes for anybody that has anything on the agenda item only at this time, please. Anybody? Okay, we will get right into it. We have a presentation tonight. Rich?
Yes, sir.
Dan?
Just so you're all aware, due to family reasons, Lorenzo's not here this evening. So if we do need him for anything, we can certainly call him, but he's unavailable right now due to some camera matters.
Yes. Thank you for it.
Yes, sir.
So the first thing we'd like to do is want to ask Molly Adams, please come forward. So we had a contest here in our township. It was a contest that was a know before you flow. And that contest required some artwork. And Molly was the one that designed this. Molly, if you want to talk a little bit about what you did to design this, that'd be really great.
Thank you. So when we first found this, we wanted to make something that would stand out from all of the other pieces, something more unique. So we decided on a collage. We used, well, I used pieces of newspaper and other pieces of like tissue paper to make the clouds look like it's raining down into a stream that eventually goes and comes into the human's mouth, which is basically representing how the water from the ocean then comes and becomes the drinking water that we use today.
There we go. Very good. And so what we're going to do is we're actually going to take a picture of this, and we are going to then put this into our paper, our township newsletter, in the spring. And in the meantime, two things. One, we have a gift certificate for you, all right? And that gift certificate is for you to enjoy with your family. And then the other thing that we have for you, and we'll bring it at a separate date, is a certificate signed by our Sheriff or Board, who as you've just heard is out for the season. But we want to thank Molly for all her hard work in this, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
This is going to be seen as a newsletter.
This is, yeah. Awesome. Thank you for showing our education.
Good job, Lorenzo. Good job, Molly. Okay. We have meeting minutes to approve. We have November 6th meeting workshop meeting minutes. Got any changes there, Dan?
I do not.
I don't have any. Do you? So I'll make a motion to approve November 6th Board of Supervising Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 So moved. And then we have the November 6th Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes. Do you have anything there, Dan?
I do not.
So no changes necessary either. So I will make a motion to approve November 6th Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Then we go on to the November 13th Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Anything there, Dan?
No, sir.
Nothing for me either, so I'll make a motion to approve November 13th Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay. That's it all the way. Financial security releases, I guess that's...
Yes, it is. Thank you. And I have two this evening for you. One is the Pepperidge Farm project, 2195 North Reading Road. We're recommending full release for that project. That was the wastewater treatment plan upgrade that they did. They had to do some stormwater connections and piping related grading work, which has all been approved, and we're recommending full release. The second is the Cherry Place property, which is Four Seasons Produce. This was a project I actually inherited from Becker Engineering. It was primarily completed by Becker. We were waiting for stabilization of some areas in order for the MPDS permit to be terminated. They had some problems establishing grass and getting it vegetated state for the basin to take place and stay for long periods of time. So it took some time to get through that process with their design engineer. But now they're in a position where they've got the entity approval, and we're recommending a full release of that financial security as well.
Is that part of the main building expansion?
Yeah, we do so, yeah.
That's been going on for years.
For some time.
Yeah. And Pepperidge Farm, they are fully completed?
They are completed, and they're up and operational, is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Got anything there, Dan?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the full release of the security posted for site improvements at 2195 North Reading Road, which would be Pepperidge Farm, in the amount of $69,300.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay. Then we have a motion to approve full release of security posted for site improvements at Four Seasons Produce, Wabash Road, in the amount of $240,625 and 16 cents.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay. And now we have the Heather Woods deed of dedication.
Correct, gentlemen. If you recall back in the late August timeframe, we did deeds of dedication for the majority of the roads in the Heather Woods developments. When that was then sent to the Department of Transportation, they recognized that one of the roads had not been included. We went back and looked, and we believe that the issue had been essentially that during the transfer of that property from one developer to another, that had been left off for some reason during the survey. That's been corrected since. The original developer and the current developer have both done their deeds of dedication, which we have here. And then we have resolution, which would be Resolution in 2025 Number 26, that essentially, again, it gives the deeds dedication, we're accepting deeds dedication, dedication of all portion of a fire corn drive, which is the final drive on the development.
Should that be part of the resolution?
It is part of the resolution. Deed dedication will go with the resolution, yes.
Oh, okay. So it doesn't need to be part of the motion. Boy, that's a long time coming, wasn't it? You've been resident in there, Dan, how long?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. You got any questions there, Dan?
I do not.
Okay. Neither do I. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 Dash 26 for the Heather Woods deed of dedication.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay. Then we have Wyler Walls.
I know Tom Matson's here from Demon Sons, but just before you tonight, the Planet Commission did review this preliminary final land development, which is a combination subdivision land development, proposing a 35,087 square foot building to be used as a contractor's office with storage space and storage yard off Route 272. It's actually just to the west of the Hoover Trucking project, if you recall, a couple of years ago. It was constructed on 272 in the commercial district. The Planet Commission did recommend all the approvals and waivers, along with deferrals in the resolution before you tonight. Tom, I'll turn it over to you if you have anything additional.
Do I have anything to add? If you guys need to have any questions with us? Do you need to go over anything else?
I don't think so. Unless the supervisors have any questions or concerns about the scope of the project or anything in the review process.
Well, that had access off of 272 as well as Wabash Road.
It did. Wabash Road is in about four feet of flood plain, so we were not able to use Wabash Road at all for our access. Plus, they were going to have trucks coming in and out, and the curves up around there to the light would get very, very difficult. So it didn't, for a couple of reasons, it didn't make sense to access off of Wabash Road. So, yeah, we are proposing an access off of 272, directly across from the insurance office, I believe it is.
Yeah. You aligned the driveways.
Yeah.
Along there. Did you get the Penda permit, I believe?
We have, we're this close. We have everything in place, but we just need to finish off one more piece of paperwork, and then we get it.
Right.
Are they requiring you to do any changes on Route 272 there?
No. No, we didn't need to do any turn lanes or anything like that. It's just an entrance itself. It's going to feel very similar to the Hoover Truck project that's next door.
Actually, similar access.
Yeah. It's a very similar access, very similar design, so.
Some questions earlier on in 272. There's turn lane requirements in some places, but not others. And is that just a Penda anomaly, I guess?
And volume projections.
It is. Turned area traffic. It's one of the things we see, different sections of the highway. They require it, other places they don't. I've heard comments on that over the years. Okay. You good there, Dan?
So according to gentlemen, seeing here are our four motions. Motion, first motion is to approve the Wyler Walls financial security recommendation coming from engineer, which was for $939,291. Just in your packets.
Okay. I'll take these one at a time. I'll make a motion to approve Wyler Walls financial security recommendation as noted.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay. Next, Austin, your packets is the motion to approve a stronger management and easement agreement for Wyler Walls.
That's our template agreement, and there was no misstatement.
That's definitely true. So you okay there, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Wyler Walls store water management and easement agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Improving Guarantee Agreement is the next one on the list. A motion to approve Wyler Walls Improving Guarantee Agreement.
And I'll make that motion to approve the Wyler Walls Improvement Guarantee Agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. And we have Resolution Number 27.
Yes, sir. It would be, and that would be for both preliminary final approval and development approval for the J K M G LLC Wyler Walls.
Okay. Since I don't have that, why don't you do that to me over here?
All right. So that would be the...
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 Dash 27 for Wyler Walls.
Final preliminary final land development.
College practice here. For final land development approval for J K M G LLC Wyler Walls. I'll nod a little second that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Just like listening to your deep voice, Jeff.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda, we have interfund transfers reviewed. I'm good. I guess there's nothing else that we might forward.
It's the, you have your engineers report as well as the kind of board inspections and service enforcement are all in back of the pack for your review. If you have any questions, you can.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, you might have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanksgiving.
Okay. Interfund transfers, listed bills, and payroll. That's neat. Okay. We have a general fund, I have to count, listed bills in the amount of $96,137.92 for the week of November 4, and $31,230.96 for the week of November... Yeah. It's not six.
Eleven.
Eleven. November 11. Is there any question on either one of those lists? Are you sure? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay. We have a light fund listed bills in the amount of $15,232.83 for the week of November 6. Is there any question there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. And there's no payroll to approve tonight. Come back next meeting for that. So that concludes our list of bills for tonight. And then we'll move on to our general fund budget presentation. Correct, sir. Manager, Rich Howard.
Okay.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. All right. So what I'm asking for this evening, gentlemen, is to advertise the proposed 2026 budget for East Cucalico Township. That is in the back of your packets. It has a separate piece. It should be all the way in back. You also have the most recent budget worksheets that we've worked through with you. But again, back of your package, you will find those two documents, as well as a letter to the Board of Supervisors and also to the residents of East Cucalico Township. I want to hit the key highlights in here and request permission for us to advertise the budget, which we will do through L and B, as well as the extra bit of review. And then that will be posted on our website for inspection and also here in the office for anybody who would like to come in and review that budget. So again, that is with you, in front of you. I want to highlight the fact that as you look at the budget for 2026, there is actually a reduction in the expenses that we expect for the coming year. That is a result of a couple of factors. However, on the whole, I want to point out that we have presented to you a balanced budget. We expect revenues at this point in time to come in at a total of $7, excuse me, We also expect to have expenses in total which gives us a very minor surplus in our budget of $13,862.5. This is presumed upon a .25 mil increase in the taxes, which would bring taxes from 2.113 mils to 2.363 mils. The reason we are proposing that slight, very slight tax increase is to cover a deficit on the initial budget calculations of $270,000, the majority of which is due to substantially rising interest, excuse me, not interest, payments on our medical insurance premiums. They went up by 18%, which is very substantial. As well, we are in the process right now of a CBA negotiation, and that will increase costs as well. And that is to ensure that we are able to continue providing the law enforcement services recruit and retain the best officers in the area. So with that presentation, are there any questions at this point in time before we, I ask for a motion to approve the advertising?
Well, I, yeah, I've got multiple comments here. We had, I think it was six different budget meetings over the last six weeks. We spent almost 15 hours total time working through this. Most of the sessions were two and a half hours each. I want to thank Rich for all the good work he put into that. As well as Chief Savage, who did a lot of work on the police budget end, as well as Wendy Dentry, our financial administrator. You folks did a fantastic job of providing information to the board. I'd like to thank Dan. We were doing a lot of investigating on our health insurance with the large increase we had this year and last year as well. The numbers get to be staggering. Dan is in the insurance business, and he's done a lot of good work there trying to help move us forward there in a better way. Thank you for what you've done. Lorenzo, too. He put in countless hours, more than what was just shown in budget meetings. The main driver here is the police budget. There's no question about it. We're looking at an overall budget increase of in the neighborhood of $345,000 in the police budget. Out of that, Denver Borough will be paying close to $70,000 in the new agreement we put out with them. So the basic output of that to East Cucalico's citizens is the $270,000 that Rich was talking about. You know, and we look at the other non-uniform employees. There was a significant healthcare increase there in the neighborhood of $129,000. You know, it's something that we have to deal with. We're looking at ideas on how to modify the current plan we have, but nothing has been satisfied yet. Unfortunately, in the healthcare business, you don't get the premium increases until, I think it was middle of October or so, or early October, that we got that information. And, you know, it was surprising. Our Public Works budget is similar or a little smaller than last year. And I think we've done a really good and tight job on holding the other budget pieces together, similar to in the past. So, you know, we didn't touch last year's record of 16 and a half hours of budget time, but we weren't far off. So, yeah, thank you again to my board members and staff that were involved. Thank you, Jeff.
It was a lot of work. And I think as we're voting tonight to advertise the budget, so I welcome all of you to look at it. Feel free to do so. I said this last year, and I'll say it again this year. We don't have the luxury of the federal government to print money. And we went through this with a five-tooth comb to cut out anything we could and make it as close as possible in every expense line. The problem is we don't know what the storms are going to look like this. I mean, this year alone, we had multiple areas of storm damage that we had to fix that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. We push some of those repairs to next year, and maybe even the following year. We don't know what's going to come this year. So with all these line items, we're looking at trying to maintain, you know, the same kind of funding for different services, maintaining the roads, some of the infrastructure with storm drains and everything else are a part of this, Jeff was just talking about, with our Public Works. But there is, I think we, I think we had a common motto. We're sitting here, absolutely no fluff in this whatsoever. It is, it is bare bones, trying to make sure we're being as responsible and frugal with taxpayer dollars as we possibly can. And that was ultimately what I wanted to be on this board for, is to make sure we're doing the right thing and maintain responsibility and make sure that we're fiscally responsible as a township, too, no matter what may come. Whether we're prepared for a season, we have a bad season, whatever it may be, that we're doing what's responsible as a township. And so I welcome all comments or I welcome all review of this. We can certainly go into anything, but we spent a lot of time on this picking of the park and trying to make sure it's absolutely what the township needs and what we need to do to make sure that we're good into the future as well.
You know, we, we will deviate a little bit from the agenda in that if anybody has any comments or questions at this time about budget that's being presented, we'll do our best to answer them if there is any. Feel free to come up and speak your mind.
We represent you, and we're doing the best possible way we can in representing you and your tax dollars. And I commend these folks, especially Rich and Wendy, for going through a budget that did not work through last year and trying to piece that together and piece it together this year. Good evening, sir.
Hey, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Good.
Yes. Can you lay out the names of the police force and the...
Maybe I can, too, sir. I'm sorry.
They've all says.
Oh, I can see it. It's been a while. Been a few years.
Well, that's a little problematic in that we're in collective bargaining. Everyone's still with the police officers, and we don't have any solid agreement yet.
So they're union?
Yes.
I'm fairly into the township, so.
Yes.
First time you guys saw me, I'm a lot.
Good.
Good. So it's collective bargaining. It's a union position, and so the township, we can't just start over?
Start over? And what do you mean?
Get rid of the union?
That's a Matthew question. Is there any force in Pennsylvania?
No.
It's not represented by a...
No, it can't be done.
Yeah.
That's what you guys are going to say.
I wish.
At the end of the day, I mean, all that is is a burden on the back of the people. You're here to represent us, not put a heavier burden on us. And you know that.
I know.
Like, that's what the Pharisees did. They just put heavier burdens on them. Isn't that, isn't that the same thing you guys are doing here?
With what?
With putting heavier taxes on people.
With regard to union or heavier taxes?
Heavyer taxes.
You know, we get a lot of reports from the citizens about how well our police department performs, you know, how timely they show up. Neighbor in Brecknock Township has no police coverage except state police. And, you know, they don't have that cost. Then they don't have that coverage either. You know, I've heard people talk about hour or more for state police officer to show up. You know, they've, our officers have saved lives by showing up, giving CPR.
Let's take away from the officers, then. We're going to, what we're saying, we're willing to continue to tax the people until, again, in the United States. And I'm not saying that about you guys. I'm just saying, the American men have a... Let's just keep taxing a little bit. Let's keep robbing Peter to pay Paul. And that, that stinks. Like, that stinks. Especially from, Dan, I know you. I've heard a lot of good things about Lorenzo. Jeffrey, I'm sorry, I've never met you before. Especially from, Dan, I know you. I've heard a lot of good things about Lorenzo. Jeffrey, I'm sorry, I've never met you before. But I've heard that Lorenzo is a man for the people, the small guy, he cares about them. I can afford a two point one one.
Point two five now.
Point two five now.
So to put that in translation for you, so you understand, that's twenty-five dollars on a hundred thousand dollars of your assessed diagram.
And then next year it's another point two five five, you know. So I'm just saying, I'm sorry, I've never met you, Rich. I've met Rich Sipper, I dealt with quite a bit. But anyway, that's all I'm saying, is this is where it goes. It doesn't stop, this creeping, this creeping bureaucracy, this creeping. And where's the justice? That's what I'm asking. I'm asking for justice, not for me, but for my name.
Right, so, no, thank you. And I'll, I'll just explain this because this is, this is what I wanted from a town hall perspective. Through our budget meeting, that is exactly what I was saying. Our budget meetings were public. We had six public budget meetings here in silence in here. No, I'm not asking for it, but I've been, I was saying that, looking at that, trying to be as responsible as I can with the taxpayer dollars. Something that we saw, so it's this fine balance, you know, as conservative Republicans, we get this label that we're never supposed to touch taxes, we're never supposed to raise taxes, we're not supposed to do that. I made a joke about not being able to print money. The federal government has so much wasteful spending that if they can just print money and make it go. And Republicans can say, we didn't raise taxes, all they have to do is cut wasteful spending. If you go through this budget, as I had said, you're not going to see anything wasteful in there. And we have a township that's growing an infrastructure that's getting older thirty or forty years. And where does it become responsible as the municipality and the local government to make sure that the roads are now repaved or whatnot? And our costs, everybody's costs, if you go to the food store, if you go to get pavement, it's all up thirty percent. So I got this conflicting thing in my heart and my mind. How do I tax my neighbor? But how do I not, how do I pay for the roads that my neighbor needs to drive on? How do I pay for the bridges? How do I, you know, last year we didn't expect to have to, but Metal Brook needed new paving. And that cost us one point three million dollars to pave the, to pave the development. And the residents there sure appreciate it. Police chief appreciates some new speeding tickets to the nice new roads, but.
But I shouldn't pay for the, for the road, right?
Right, yeah, hopefully, in theory.
The revenue from the tickets should pay for the one point three million.
Right, so we have, we have our, I'll just call it simply our savings account. How long is it responsible for me to continue to deplete our savings account as our costs go up? Without changing the way we either, without having to increase revenue a little bit to try to keep us from bleeding out our savings account and be responsible as we should be with that taxpayer dollar? And then how long can we continue to live off of that without having to fix East Cocalco Heights, which is probably next, which was built right around the same time as, as Metal Brook? Where are the roads going over there? I don't know, so.
Well, let me ask you this then, Dan. Have you cut from the public works side things at all? Or are we just always stacking on it? Like, are we always stacking on to the top with taxes? Or can we cut other places?
So that's, that's also something.
We, we as American citizens have had to cut our expenditures.
Right.
So, so I don't see that happening in government. I would, I hope it's happening here.
I would say in this government, you would see that. You don't see it in, I'd say, national government, some of our surrounding. So this year, this township will be, have zero debt. And so that's something we're obviously working towards and making sure that we're, we're being fiscally responsible that way because paying interest on debt is no longer the head of the sink. Do you understand that? So this township will not be in debt anymore after our last bridge payment for Denver Road Bridge.
Next year.
This, in twenty twenty-six. I'm sorry. I meant this budget. So our public works, you know, no, I think we have, we have our new public works director back here in the back. Has a lot of great ideas, but working on ways and saving money and not building that, I understand what you're saying, not raising the budget. Actually, Rich talked about that. I think our public works budget is actually down this year. And so we're looking at maybe tarn chipping instead of paving brand new, you know, these things. Because we are, I am a resident here, and I am cutting things out of my personal life, just as we're trying to do from a township level. You know, we appreciate our police force. We're trying to make them competitive with the rest of the police forces around us and in order to gain new, new quality cadets or police officers. We by far have the best chief in the entire county, if not the state. And he is fiscally responsible too. I mean, surely we could have replaced the car this year, but we're going to push that off a little bit. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we tightened our belt on this year. And some we couldn't, and that comes to healthcare, which went up seventeen percent in twenty twenty-five, and it's going up eighteen percent in twenty twenty-six.
So I would ask this then. If you're going to raise taxes on people, can at least stop property taxes on the other way? You laugh.
I'm not laughing.
You know there's people that are going to lose their properties. And the sheriff doesn't care. He's going to sell them at a sheriff's auction. He doesn't care. I've talked a lot.
Yeah.
Like, can we at least put, can, can, can the police officer at least stand up for those people? And say, no, our taxes went up, we're not going to put them in prison. I'm, I'm asking. We're not going to put him out on the streets. There's just this incident lately where a name here, a woman who had Alzheimer's, they sold her house for thirty-five hundred dollars. I think it was in New York City. What's happening here? It's asking us justice.
Is it? I don't have an example of that, and we represent the tax claim bureau.
But there's houses, there's houses getting sold on sheriff's.
A lot of real estate developers, a lot of flippers, a lot of investors.
You're saying there's no houses got sold?
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying it's very few.
Are you talking about this?
Taxing.
It's happened, though. They're in the sheriff's ledger.
Sheriff sale is different. Sheriff's sales are not paying your mortgage. Tax claim sales are not paying your taxes, and there are very few that go to sale. We represent, we, we represent the bureau. I'm telling you the truth. You know, you can, you can talk in generalizations, but if you don't have an example, I can tell you, I do, and they are very few.
Well, I'm just asking. Is that just?
No, you weren't asking. You were asserting that the decisions made by this board are causing widows and orphans to be sold at their houses.
Hypothetically. That's right.
Hypothetically, I'm sorry. I just needed to correct you. It's in very few properties go to tax sale in Lancaster County.
It's, I do not want to see that. Nobody here does. It does right just like, right? And so, but anyway, yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I certainly do because I too am property owner and understand exactly what you're saying. So thank you for coming to all of our, we, yeah, thank you. Anybody else? I welcome you. These are your tax dollars. Okay. Okay. This is a motion to advertise the taxes. The motion to pass the budget happens in December, which means where that, that will also be part of the advertisement. The advertisement, which we will send to the Lancaster News tomorrow morning for publication, first available publication in the Lancaster News and then the next available publication as well in the Haverd Review. That will note the date of the posting of this. And then it will also note the closing date, which will be the date of the board meeting in December, December eighteenth. It must be advertised for a minimum of twenty days. That actually should be approximately twenty-five days when meeting is held. Okay. I make a motion to advertise the twenty twenty-six general funding budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 So moved.
I call a motion.
Okay. Part of the course. Chief Savage. Looks like you have a shape there.
No, beard's for brothers this month. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Byrne, thank you for your kind words. I do appreciate that. They're absolutely true. The chief's report for October twenty twenty-five, pretty interesting case. A thirty-year-old Stevens man was charged with false reports to law enforcement following a vehicle stop in the one hundred block of Denver Road on October thirtieth. The driver was unable to produce a driver's license and provided officers with a fictitious name and date of birth. Through further investigation, officers confirmed his true identity and earned an outstanding felony arrest warrant. He was taken into custody and turned over to the issuing authorities and were handed to Lancaster County Prison. The same individual was later charged with retail theft involving the theft of more than twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of lottery tickets from a convenience store at two Denver Road on October eighteenth. The man distracted the convenience store clerk before rolling behind the counter and taking the tickets. He then exited the store and fled prior to police arriving. Investigators compared tattoos visible from the store surveillance footage with photos obtained during an earlier vehicle stop and confirmed it was the same person. During the month of October, officers located three individuals in Denver Borough, one in East Cocalco Township. Each had outstanding warrants and they were turned over to the issuing authorities. During the month of October, a week-long speed study was conducted in the four hundred block of Locust Street in Denver Borough. The average speed recorded during this study was twenty-five point eight miles per hour. The highest speed recorded was forty-seven. Another week-long speed study was conducted in the three hundred block of East Lancaster Avenue in Denver Borough. The average speed recorded there was just under thirty-two miles per hour. The highest speed recorded was seventy-two, and that's a twenty-five mile per hour zone. Officers conducted a week-long speed study here in the township in the first block of James Drive. The average speed recorded was twenty-five point six miles per hour. The highest speed recorded was forty-two. We've received a lot of complaints about vehicular traffic, primarily speeding on, on James Drive since the paving was stopped.
So that was?
It's the new road. That was, that was after.
That was after the paving.
Officers conducted a speed enforcement detail in the one hundred block of North Greemstown Road here in the township. Officers issued non-citations for speeding violations. There was another speed enforcement detail in the two hundred block of East Lancaster Avenue in Denver Borough, and eight citations were issued for speeding violations. During the month of October, officers completed the mandatory use-of-force update training in accordance with the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission, which required every year. Sergeant Weaver and Sergeant McCabe successfully completed a week-long supervising patrol critical incident training. This training is designed to provide patrol supervisors with the knowledge, skills, and tools necessary to effectively manage and coordinate critical incidents, ensuring a safe and efficient response. And finally, Sergeant Weaver, Sergeant McCabe, and Officer Stoffer completed forty hours of accident reconstruction training. These officers continue to pursue ongoing training and education in this specialized field. During the month of October, officers responded to five hundred eighty-two calls for service here in the township and a hundred ninety calls for service in Denver Borough. And that concludes my report. Thank you, sir. What would you consider a critical incident? An active shooting, maybe a hostage situation. You know, we were fortunate when we had the active shooting. We had very experienced, not that, not that, I don't think, I think any officer would be prepared to handle that, that critical incident. We had an outstanding crew, an outstanding supervisor working that evening of the, of the active shooting incident. Not just to handle the incident, not just to make sure that there was a safe outcome for, for the hostage and then, and the suspect, but also coordinating the assistance from neighboring jurisdictions, setting up perimeters. That all falls on the supervisor. So I am a big advocate of training for officers, for patrol supervisors. And this training came across my desk and I thought it would be perfect for these two sergeants.
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
The, I noticed that the Top Gun awards were put out, or is that in, in your report next month?
That'll be in November, yes. But yes, I'm very proud to announce that two officers, Officer Lori King and Officer Shane Johnson, were chosen to receive the Pennsylvania DUI Top Gun Award. Forty-nine officers throughout the state received this award and two were from our department. So I'm very proud of the officers.
You know, that, every year the, the numbers are significant of what they pull off our roads, making them a safer place. And, you know, when anybody talks about the cost of police, well, I don't think any of us in this room want anybody on our roads that are, are not, that are impaired in any way. So, you know, good job to them and you as well. That's, that's a good thing for all of us.
Many people believe that the DUI enforcement is sure of the alcohol. And I can say with certainty that a lot of it is, but I would say that there's an increase in drug usage in combination of alcohol and drugs, whether it's prescription drugs or illicit drugs. But we're seeing a lot of illicit drugs, people driving. They, they may have a medical marijuana card, and that's what they'll tell our officers when they, when the officers smell marijuana. Have a medical marijuana card while you're still not permitted to operate a vehicle while you're smoking marijuana.
Intensely.
Correct.
Yes, well, we'll look forward to hearing about that again next time.
Absolutely.
Do you know the figure of the percentage? Does that make sense?
Eighty, twenty? Um, yeah, I think that, I think, I think it's maybe even higher than twenty percent, that, that there's at least a combination. We're getting a lot of combinations. I mean, officers are trained to detect, if, if someone is impaired, that they're trained to detect whether it's alcohol and/or illicit drugs or prescription drugs.
Okay. Great. Yeah, good job to them.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, finance, records are, our supply.
The Joe.
Well, this building is done and that's, that's the, uh, new business. Anything, are we going to talk about a luncheon or? Put it up for the staff?
Yes.
So we, we look today, we have Reserve Greemstown for the seventeenth of December for the staff members of our boards. And we're going to be putting that together over the next couple of weeks with our products. After at least tonight, started working on that this morning, actually yesterday, re-engaged this morning for the reserve. Hopefully have a nice event for, for our boards and vendors. Yes, we can, you all right with the idea?
Yeah, sounds great.
Okay. Any outreach? It's approval for you to keep filing for, for all your technology. For both, both businesses and, and the reserve. Nothing for me. And public comments? Five minutes per person on my, anything you'd like to talk about?
I'm back.
You're back.
All right, so like I said, I just moved here. Thanks for the opportunity. So tonight, I'm standing here not as a permit holder or an escrow accountant, but as a neighbor. A follower of Jesus Christ who still believes that men we elect are supposed to establish justice between the man and his neighbor. Deuteronomy six twenty tells us, your role, justice and only justice you shall follow, that you may live and inherit the land. Okay? We might say, okay, that's old fashioned, but it does apply to you. Six months ago, June twenty-fourth, one of the inspectors from Technicon came to my house to do a routine footer inspection. While there, he snapped a few photos of some land, claiming that we were on, going in the back from an old path that had been overgrown. At two thirty-seven that same day, Michael, who was here earlier, declared it appears to be over an acre. By three o'clock, Jeff Young issued a blanket stop work order that shut down my house, my garage, and my contractors, everything. No measurement, no phone call, no questions. Guilty until proven innocent. Next morning, I was out of the county, I was out of.
The next morning, I was out of the county, I was out of state, actually. Ryan Regling from the County Conservation District walked on my property without notice, consent, or any warning, or telling me prior. Then, we just found out today that my escrow has been charged $1,500 over the last three months. Money that was billed by Technicon and law firm Nicholas Holden Dell, which was over $900, has been withheld from my account. So, we have the township solicitor, who is coming onto my property, doing a violation notice, and then benefiting from the violation notice. I'd like to know how that's not a clear conflict of interest. I don't think that's oversight, I think that's racket, that's theft, okay? I'm not that, but... So...
The, the...
You go.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we've handed the keys of justice, per se, right? Away from the men who are sitting at the gates. Daniel, Lorenzo, and Jeffrey, who have been elected to a private organization to police us. And you guys, you know, if that's the way you guys want to do it, that's fine, I'm not saying that's not what you should do. What I'm simply saying is, I'm here to find out if you guys approve of that. That's all I'm here for. So, people tell me, like I said earlier, Lorenzo's a man who stands up for the little guy. Dan, you and I have had conversations, and Jeff, like I said, I don't know you. But my question is, do we think that that is establishing justice? When a company can walk onto a property, issue a violation, and then bill you for the perceived violation without feeling due diligence? That's what I'd like to know. If your answer is yes, then own it, own it, be happy with that, that's fine. Stand up and tell us it's perfectly moral, that's fine. Have a hired gun that shoots first, and then invoices later, and pats his pockets with the profits. But if you know it's wrong, then do something about it. I mean, this is why we left Europe, right? This is why we fought the Revolutionary War, right? Government overreach. I would say, I would say the conflict of interest needs to end, but again, what, who are we, the little guys? Herrsberg protected people, he was sworn, you know, sworn up to serve. Real leadership doesn't say that's always how it's been done, right? Real leadership stands up and says, "Not on my watch." So I'm gonna close with this, the Lord has tested us on his scales, but after a week's fine favor with him, I would say the scales aren't right, or accurate. I believe, I moved here. I knew Dan prior, I heard Lorenzo's a good man, and I heard Jeffrey is as well. I still believe you guys are, I'm not denying that. But I'm saying, own this, if this is the way you guys want to operate, that's fine. I can afford $1,600, 14, 30, whatever it is, that's fine. I'm just saying, just for a can. At the end of the day, five days later, no violations. The stop work order was pulled, but it cost them $1,300, attorney's fees, and engineering fees. Prove me right, you guys are just... Or prove me wrong.
Paul, there's...
Now, do you have the receipts here?
Sir, I mean, I can't answer to any of, because I don't, I don't know exactly what went on, and I don't know what happened, and surely, I'm sure Matt can say something, but there's three sides to every coin. So you obviously have your side, and we'll have our side, and we'll have to figure out what's in the middle. But I can't really comment much further than that. I mean, obviously, I think we are right, we are righteous and just as a board here, and I can answer that. And if it's, if it's legally or morally wrong, what was happening, then we'll absolutely correct it, and I believe our manager would, and I know Matt would as well. So, oh, I have to research it, I can't say one thing or the other right now.
Perhaps that means, or rather than disclosing it publicly, I could have your specific address and...
Not here for me.
I'm not here.
I'm not here for me.
Well, your specific incident, but...
Not mine, that is what it is, it's an example that I wanted to bring to you guys. It's not, I'm not sitting there saying, you guys, this is common practice.
No, sir, we understand that, but as the manager, as the man that these gentlemen have hired to ensure that we do the right things, and I believe or deeply that myself, it would help me to understand if there is something that has happened, and that we can correct that across the board. And I can't do that without knowing the background details of putting those pieces together, anything going from there. So, I'll get you my card after the meeting, and ask you to send me some information, and I'll go from there. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Our next meeting, Thursday, December 4th, at 7:00 PM here in the Township Hall. Having no more business, I make a motion to return.
Second.
Motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved, thank you everybody for coming out.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.